Let's get this City and Marine City Commission meeting to order. Special meeting Thursday, May 28th at 7:00 PM. Can we please take a moment of silence to for our dealer departed? Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was wonderful. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Unfortunately, I'm here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman.
I'm here.
City Manager Levin.
Moving on to the agenda. I would like to take something out, but replace it with something else. An 11B, a letter from the mayor to about opening businesses. I'm just, it's a statement I'll read during, just during, commisioner privilege, but I would like to add senior parade into that same place if I could for discussion. Can I get a motion for that?
Senior, senior one, senior in high school?
That would be a discussion item only?
Yeah, that would be a discussion item.
I got her, Jacob, do we have a second on that?
Support for Kaman.
Any questions on the agenda? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise issues with the commission. The commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, or approval of the city commission minutes, May 7th, 2020.
Hendrick, so moved.
Support Callahan.
Any corrections or deletions on those? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yep.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve items 7A through D.
Callahan makes a motion to approve consent agenda, items A through D as presented.
All in favor, or roll call vote, please.
Mayor, can I interject something for a moment? I wanted to explain the reason that 7D is on the consent agenda. They were looking for some, the Maritime Days Festival was looking for something from the cities, whether they could go on with the festival or not, they're kind of in a crossroad right now. I didn't, I didn't know if that was something that the board could answer, but I just wanted to let you know, normally this time of the year, we have Maritime Days on here with a final schedule, because you have approved the date, and we don't have a final schedule, they're kind of at a crossroads, like I said, wondering if they are going to be able to continue on having Maritime Days. Is there any type of feedback on that?
I don't believe we can make that decision with what ludicrous statements keep coming out of Lansing. We can't say one way or another, we don't know, and that's, it's, it's sad. I mean, I really don't want to see it canceled, but I don't understand, I don't know if there's a way that we can say a or nay at this time.
I just wanted to explain why it was on here. They requested that we put it on there, and I, I agree with your response, so that's all I need.
But to have it in the discussion, but to have it in the discussion, hold on, Bill. To have it in the discussion, we can't discuss that during this.
I understand.
Consent agenda, it has to go back into general discussion.
Well, this is, this is Elaine here, just to let you know that what you would be approving here would be that you're allowing it, but it's always subject to whatever executive order we're under at the time.
So, we can't have a discussion about it, just, we're going to pass it, just by the All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to financial business. Disbursements including payroll for $368,802.88.
Callahan makes a motion to include disbursements, including payroll for $368,802.88.
Bryson, support.
Support by Verkaman.
Hearing no questions, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Motion carries.
Moving on to, uh, public hearing, 9A for proposed budget 2020 to 2021. Notice is hereby given that the city commission will conduct a hearing to receive public comments on the proposed budget for 2020, 2021 budget. Please limit your comments to five minutes. The public hearing has been declared open at 7:09 PM. Anyone like to raise issue with the public, with the proposed budget? Last call, anyone's like to speak on the proposed budget? Public hearing is now closed at 7:11 PM.
We should close the public hearing by motion, Mr. Mayor.
Can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing for the budget for 2019, 2020.
Support Clausen.
That would be 2021, correct, Cheryl?
Roll call vote, please. 2021.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, moving on to new business, we have resolution number 005-2020, the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget, and again, a motion to approve.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the 20, okay, go ahead.
All right, we have a mo, we do have a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the 2021 budget as presented.
Support for Kaman.
All right. Questions, concerns, deletions, additions?
I have some, Mayor Hendrick.
Go ahead, Lisa, go ahead, Lisa, just give the page number so we can be on the same page.
All right. Okay, so, um, there's a couple things, there's some stuff in this budget that I like, and there's some stuff in this budget that I don't like. Due to the fact that the state has a $3 billion shortfall, I'm concerned about the raises and what kind of message that sends out at a time when people are struggling and businesses are failing because of the COVID mess. These are very tough times, and we're giving out raises with no evaluations. Some of the issues, I looked on the wage and benefit schedule, here's some of the highlights here. The city manager is going to go from 65 to 70,000, and these are without benefits, this is just the wages. The clerk, the clerk got a $5 an hour raise last year, now we're going to go another from 58 to 40, to 59,500. So there's another $1,000 raise. We just hired the treasurer at 58,000, now that's jumping to 59,500, and it hasn't even been a year. The PD office manager, we hired that person just full-time with, and gave benefits last year at $14 an hour, that person's jumping to $18 an hour, $4 increase. Most of the rest of them are 50 cents to a dollar, depending on the issue, but just wages alone is over a million dollars, and then if you add in all the benefits, it's a million three. So, that's the first concern, when we could see, according to the SEMCOG age, a 12.9% decrease in revenue. Also, the chief's car, I think we should be paying a mileage, that car, or vehicle has always been a sore point in this community with the people. I don't think we need to spend 26,000 to buy a car for somebody to drive a few blocks to work and back, so that's another one. And I don't base these wages, to me, I don't base them on other communities, I base it on what our people do and what we're paying out, and we pay some pretty good wages and benefits here in this community. And everybody's always saying, well, we have a lot of money in the general fund, well, we could have one major infrastructure failure, and that could wipe out that savings right now. And plus the fact that we're not going to get a lot of money coming in with this mess, and we don't even know what those figures are going to be, I think it's sending the wrong message to, to add that information into this budget at this time. That's it.
Anyone else have comments or?
Yeah, I was trying to listen to our governor today, and at 3.5 billion, that is now up to 8.5 billion. She's gone in, she's gone into her emergency money, and, so where are we going to get money from? The governor also took a 10% raise, and all of her employees took a 5% raise. I don't feel, I said that before, I don't feel at this time we should be giving any Thank you.
No more comments on the budget. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going to move on to the fee schedule, need a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve these fee schedule as presented, Bryson.
Callahan, support.
I support.
All right, any questions or concern on the fee schedule?
What I, so, I had a question on the building inspector, I said when they hired him, that she brought him in at the $38 an hour at the top rate, and where can he go, and now we're giving him a raise? That's all that I wanted.
Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to oxidation ditch coupler with a motion to waive competitive bids first. Can you get a brief overview on this before we even discuss the, your vote on the competitive bid issue?
If Mike is on, I think he might be able to give the best detailed description on
I'm here. Okay, this coupling is for the, one of the ditching units at the wastewater plant, explain in a letter. The coupling is failing, these units are 30 years old, and they're hard to find parts. And when we can find parts, we'd rather buy the parts and replace the whole ditching unit, which is going to be 60,000, 70,000 dollars. I'm just looking for a motion to purchase these couplings. We have two of them that take the same coupling, and we can replace one now and keep one in stock for repairing the other one. And that's about it.
Mike, Bob Davis here, what supports the, the single source here, for purposes of waiving competitive bidding?
The single source is, we checked with all of our vendors to try to find one, and this is what we were recommended to go to to find this coupling. We searched all over, and this is the only person that we found so far, and I could try longer and try to get bidding, but, again, these units are 30 years old, and there's only certain companies that make them, or make repair parts for them, and if you like it, we'll try to find other vendors that will sell the same part. But we did our due diligence, tried and...
No, Mike, that's good, I, I think that satisfies the issue.
Yes, it does. So, can I get a motion to waive competitive bidding, just the competitive bidding part of it, this isn't to do, just the competitive bidding, please?
Hendrick, I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the couplings.
Jacob, you want to support?
Support.
Okay. Uh, any questions on the waiving competitive bid? I know Mike's explained it a little bit for us already, but anybody's got any question on it? Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, is that a grease coupling, or what is it?
It's wastewater, I don't know. It's not one of my areas of expertise. Mike, can you answer that question?
Yeah, so it's a coupling that goes, when driveshaft loaded, the ditching unit, so if anything happens, we don't blow up the gearbox, ditching unit, or the rotator in the oxidation ditch.
I just wondered if there was an oiler on that, a coupling oiler or grease fitting?
No, the coupling is like a direct shaft, it's like a coupling on a, it's like a U-joint, that's what this is, it connects the water shaft to the ditching unit itself.
Yeah, and some of the, some of them have oil grease fittings on them, but evidently some doesn't.
These do not have oil grease fittings on them.
You good with that, Bill?
Yes.
Any other questions on the waiving of competitive bidding? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen. Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to authorize the purchase.
All right, Hendrick, I'll make the motion that we approve purchasing the couplings through Evoqua from Waukesha, Wisconsin, in the amount of $5,306.89. Bryson, support.
Okay, any questions or concerns on the purchase now? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to discussion of a parade for the seniors. I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but they're trying to put together a parade for our graduating seniors. And it would be nice, the Sunday night, I'm actually bringing up the, it would been through the Marine City All Night Party Committee, parade would start at Holy Cross, Sunday night, June 7th, Sunday afternoon at 4:30, right at 4:30, and start at 5 o'clock. And it's also to help support our local businesses down there, and kind of have a little bit of a, you know, treat the kids to a little bit of, they're going to walk down Water Street with six-foot spacing to keep our separation, and the fire department, police department are already on board, they've already contacted the state police and the sheriff's department to help us out with it, too. So, I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention and ask for their permission.
Did I miss the date there?
This is Hendrick, I think it's a great idea, and I would make a motion that we allow the senior parade for June 7th.
Can I get support for that?
Support, Callahan.
Excellent, any comments or questions on it? Um, Mary Beth Pastell, Pat Sallis has been doing a lot of work along with Lisa Livernoy, Pettinger on this, and I just want to thank them for bringing it to my attention and letting me help out a little bit with it, because the kids have lost a lot, and hopefully we can make it Dave, make it a little bit of a little better scenario than they've been facing the rest of this year. But if anybody has any other questions on it, it's still evolving, we'll get some more information to you.
Mayor, is there going to be a band, like the band?
We talked, and it doesn't look like we'll be able to get that together, just because of being a school activity, and some of the issues, to even the Maritime Days base with getting a band there, so, for the, a regular Maritime Days parade, so, I just don't think that'll be happening, we're going to have to come up with something, something else.
It's bad we couldn't find some people that play drums, you know, the drums that you put around your neck, you know, the little, I forgot what they're called, you know?
Well, we're still, we're still working on different things, so we'll probably try and put as much together with it as can, and like I said, Chief Slankster and Chief Hustle are already on board to get us some, get the fire department, police department help, at least with lights and sirens, anyway.
Right.
And hopefully, we can get, you know, people uptown and properly spaced, because God forbid, we're not properly spaced. If anybody can sense my animot will be over the phone. All right, but, anyone else have any questions on that? Right now, the course is just going to go from Holy Cross down to the beach, but we may expand it if we can, depending on the temperature and the weather, because the kids will be, hopefully, wearing... Right now, the course is just going to go from Holy Cross down to the beach, but we may expand it if we can, depending on the temperature and the weather because the kids will be hopefully wearing cap and gown, so. But if I don't, if I'm not hearing any other questions, we can call a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Water Main Project Construction Phase Service Cost. Going to get a motion to approve.
I make a motion we approve the Water Main Construction Phase Service Cost, Bryson.
I support that, Verkaman.
Any questions or concerns on that?
This is Hendrick. Do we have to waive bidding on this?
Um, I'm sure.
Hey, Bob.
Is this a service or a product?
This is a service. So what this is, is this is putting in the budget nine thousand dollars for the, uh, construction services from the engineer waitrim for the two road projects that we have in the twenty-twenty-one budget.
And they're are, they're already our engineers, so we don't have to waive competitive bidding here.
We've been using them, but they're not a, we are engineering firm.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about whether or not they actually are, uh, I guess, record, um, engineer, engineered record.
Well, it is a professional service. You could, you could move on it without competitive bidding, or you could decide that you want competitive bidding.
I, I would think that at this point, we do have this project. They have been working on the plans, um, that it would be best to move forward with them on this project. And then after we get through this project, or actually even in the interim, we could work on putting this service out to bid.
All right. I'll back off on that, but I, I just wish that we would start looking at this because I know other communities are using other engineering firms and saving money. So that's my, that's my issue.
Yeah, I think we can, we can prepare a RFP for an engineering consultant for the city after this.
I think that's what...
So then that would be a, we would use that, uh, engineering firm more, uh, permanently then. We wouldn't have to take it out for bid each job then, correct?
Correct.
Right, you would have, you would have advanced, uh, disclosed rates, hourly rates, terms and conditions, contract approval with what would be known as your city engineer.
Can we get moving on that quickly so that we don't have another, another one project come through without having a certified city engineer?
No problem.
Are we going to go out for bid on that? I thought we had talked at the last couple of meetings about going out for bid on the engineer.
That's what we just talked about.
That's what we're just, yeah, we are going to do that.
Thank you.
Now, any questions on this project itself, though?
No.
Do we still need a motion? Did we get a motion on this one?
Yes, we did.
All right. So any questions on this project itself?
Um, I guess if we get this approved, when do you estimate the start of the project?
They have already started some of the work, so they just need to complete bid docs and then we'd be going out to bidding.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-one, water, water sewer rates, first reading introduction. I'm going to motion to introduce.
I make a motion we introduce ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-one for first reading. Bryson.
Support, Bill Flosson.
Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on for the cancellation of the July second, two thousand twenty meeting. Going to get a motion to approve.
Hendrick, so moved.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city manager's report.
Uh, not really anything to add. Um, I guess probably the biggest thing is that our next meeting scheduled for next Thursday. We're planning on having the city commission meet over at two-sixty South Parker, and we will be letting the public participate via Zoom. We're still working on details with CTV if they'll be able to come and do the video recording of the meeting. That's it.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yes, Hendrick.
Good luck, Lisa.
All right, so we've had the big snafu with those garbage cans all week long and over the holiday. Um, and I realize that sometimes people put cardboard over the hole and don't stuff the stuff down in there because they have a small hole. But it seemed like it was starting to do every single day, so can we do either add some garbage cans or get some different ones down towards the beach in that area so that they're not all, um, on Facebook every day?
Yep, we've actually already addressed that. We added a couple extra, um, regular opening trash cans down there. Um, we're also going to be having some staff and they'll be checking those on a more regular basis over the weekends.
Okay. Next thing is, um, I see a number of small sinkholes forming along the, um, mainly in Broadway Park, big enough to twist an ankle in that need to be addressed um, because of the water and the waves. Um, they should, all the parks should be evaluated, though, because I think there's a few down farther also, but, um, they're getting kind of dangerous. So that's the next one.
Right. I'll make sure our DPW doesn't walk up the seawall.
Pardon?
I'll make sure DPW doesn't walk up the seawall and takes a look at all of them.
Yeah, there's some, there's quite, there's, I, I counted at least four of them down in Broadway Park alone. All right, the last one is, I know we're doing the crack ceiling, but, um, we need to be more careful because we're spraying over a lot of grass, big clumps of it in the streets. And, um, I always thought that stuff should have been removed and cleaned out before we... So that's the last one. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Elaine, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I got contacted by the Chamber of Commerce and asked to sit on a board to help navigate through a MEDC grant proposal that the city was too busy to handle. Then we had a chance of getting fifty thousand dollars for our community businesses, but we weren't going to run it through the city. Is there any validity to this?
I was communicating with the EDA, trying to figure out if it was feasible for us to do that, and with the quick turnaround time, the potential of having to come before city commission, and also not having the budget for a grant writer presented a problem in us doing that.
But I thought if an issue came up, we agreed we were going to hire or get, try to find a grant writer that would be available for those type of things.
Well, we, we have a grant writer on our fee schedule, and that's something that we pay out of our budget for a staff member. And right now, we're kind of frozen on the budget and don't have any more in the budget for another grant this year. There have been a lot of other opportunities for local businesses to be able to get funding, and I know that quite a few have participated and some have received funding.
True, but we should be doing anything we can to try to help these businesses.
And I feel that we just dropped the ball again on this situation. And, and here we're going to have to rush it through to get it because there was a two- to three-week lag on getting that passed on to the chamber. All right. Does anyone else have anything else for the city manager?
Yeah, I've got one thing. One, Bill Flosson, I got a complaint from the neighbor that down by the, uh, park area on, uh, North Mary, by the school, there's been a car sitting there, a white car, um, been sitting there for a year and a half with a fire.
I'll have the police department look into it.
Do you have a vehicle description or anything for the city manager, or at least text her what kind of vehicle it is?
It's a white guy, I know. I just know when I saw that the guy, I thought he pointed out it was a white, uh, I believe it was a Chevy.
He doesn't, you don't have to do it over the, but this, she needs a little more information to go on, so if you do let her know, please give her a description.
The light got on the day now and it's still sitting there after the guy complained.
Mr. Mayor, it's Jim.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll look into that. On my way home, I'll, I'll take a gander at that and see if I can find it.
Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any more items for the city manager? Okay, moving on then to commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Cheryl, would you like to get us started?
Yes, the only thing that I have is I am very happy to see that we are moving forward with reopenings. Um, and I'm happy to see, um, many businesses that we have in town, uh, and around town with their open signs up and their open flags up. And I encourage everyone to just even stop in and say hello. I mean, it's, you don't have to spend a lot of money everywhere, but I mean, if you can, just stop in and say hello. We miss seeing everyone. Uh, we've been, you know, a lot of the businesses have been closed for a couple of months. Um, and it certainly is nice to get public support. Thank you.
Mr. Merchant.
Uh, nothing in this time.
Mr. Flosson.
Oh, I guess, uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, we have donuts and coffee in the morning. The bakery's open. So that was a good thing. And, uh, hopefully we get some, uh, more ways to get people open. Uh, I know that other communities are looking at, uh, uh, closing off certain areas of the streets and letting that, letting them come outside. And, uh, because it gives them more free area. But, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Wendy, get any comments for tonight?
Um, yes, I just kind of like want to piggyback on what Commissioner Verkaman had to say. Um, you know, it was nice to, well, I see the businesses, some of the business, more of the businesses, I should say, be able to open their doors on Tuesday. Um, I do want to thank our, our community for, um, the support that, um, that they're giving the businesses right now. I mean, you know, even like you say, even just poking your head in, saying hi, um, just, just seeing people, you know, other than the family that you're used to being around. Um, it makes a big difference. So, um, you know, we're going to, we're going to crawl out of this. We're, we're, we're an excellent community. We're very supportive of each other. And, uh, we'll get out of this. We'll get out of this. And I think, uh, this week was, uh, just actually the first few days of this week was a, um, a good indication of that. So thank you, everybody, for your support. Let's keep it up.
Lisa, you got something for us tonight?
Nope, pass.
Jacob.
I have nothing.
Well, that's good. Those will be short. Mine's not. We need to open this community up. I'm tired of having business owners come to me in tears. I had a couple of business owners come to me just, and I know they were venting and they just wanted to be open, and it's just not fair with the way these rules are. There's got to be something. There are hairdressers and barber shops that need to be open. We can't just, one section of the industry can be open. It's just, it's just not the right thing. It's not American, the way that this is being done. Unless you have a, a cottage up north, let's open that district up. That's how it works, apparently. And I don't, and I know Mr. Davis probably won't be all that happy with some of these comments, but this is just, they're going so far over the, the true meaning of the Constitution, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. This is just ridiculous. And this has been so blown out of proportion by the, uh, the media. You can tell it's got me so perplexed that I should have wrote more down before this. But we need to open this community up, not just our city, but also our community. It's just not fair for some businesses to be wide open and then others to be so restricted they can't even open their doors. And is, if some of these are lifelong residents of the community that need our support. And I love hearing things that people have done to help one another, and we just don't, we need to get by this. And I don't think waiting is truly a good option anymore. We've been patient. We've given things up. Now let us go. With that, I ask for adjournment.
Hendrick, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.